Good evening and welcome to the North Penn School District's regular monthly meeting. Gentlemen, do you have a show for us tonight?
Thank you.
Spring has sprung. The days are getting longer and brighter, and our buildings are bustling inside and out with activities. Let's take a look at some of what has happened over the last few weeks across the district. It was National School Breakfast Week, and Montgomery Elementary celebrated with a special breakfast event. Parents were invited to eat a healthy nutritious breakfast with their children. The event encouraged all families to wake up to a great breakfast each and every day, whether at school or at home. The NPHS Fashion Merchandising Classes presented the Secret Garden Fashion Show. Over sixty students showed off their creations on the runway in front of the camera flashes and bright lights. The fashion show is held each March as a culminating event to the students' hard work in fashion merchandising. And over the past few weeks, our dedicated North Penn students and staff have participated in so many awesome charitable events for those in need. Here is just a small sampling of them. The North Penn High School Thespians held the Seventeenth Annual Night of the Arts Gala benefiting Broadway Cares Equity Fights AIDS Organization. The event featured the talented performances of high school students and included previews of all three of the middle school musicals. This year, over fourteen hundred dollars was raised with a grand total of more than seventy-seven thousand dollars donated to the BCEFA since nineteen ninety-nine by the North Penn High School Thespians from this event. Inglewood Elementary students participated in their annual Helping Hands Day. Organized by the Home and School Association, students in each grade packed care bags for those in need in our community. The students also had the opportunity to decorate the bags and send thoughtful messages to the recipients. The North Penn Wrestling Organization made a generous donation to the Preston Robert Tisch Brain Tumor Center at Duke University. With money raised from the Take Down Cancer T-shirt sales and a generous donation from the North Penn Youth Wrestling Organization, twenty-nine hundred dollars was donated to the center in honor of head coach Rob Shetzelion's wife, Christine, who lost her courageous battle with brain cancer last spring. North Penn staff members and numerous players and coaches of the North Penn baseball team braved the shave for the Saint Baldrick's Foundation for Childhood Cancer Research. At the local event in Lansdale, over twenty thousand dollars was raised, with the baseball team raising over seventeen hundred of that total. One special person on hand was Honore Luca Pachente, a Gwinnett Square second grader who has survived three brain tumor surgeries and keeps on fighting. Class of two thousand nine alum and Super Bowl fifty champion Brandon McManus stopped by his alma mater to say hello and accept a donation to his foundation, the Anti-Bully Squad. Student government president Katie Solomon presented the twenty-five-hundred-dollar check to Brandon during his surprise visit last week. The donation was money raised from the sale of the popular orange Brandon McManus t-shirts for his appearance in Super Bowl fifty for the Denver Broncos. Brandon also took time to stop by and surprise a few of his favorite teachers. He also met with other staff members to express his gratitude to them for his time at North Penn, stopping for hundreds of selfies along the way. And finally, Jason Bashaw, Assistant Principal at Pendale, was green for a cause. Students raised funds for the North Penn Educational Foundation during Foundation February, and their prize, a green Bashaw. And yes, that is how he looked all day long. Check out our YouTube channel twenty-four seven for all of these stories and more at youtube.com backslash NPTV. For North Penn Television, I'm Quadri Fletcher. Have a great night.
Welcome to our regularly scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome. A published note. The board did meet in executive session tonight, March seventeenth, two thousand sixteen, from six-thirty. Six-thirty to seven-thirty PM to discuss matters of potential litigation and negotiations. All right, let's move through. Anybody wishing to speak to the board, please feel free to step forward, state your name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook.
Hopefully, I just want to speak a couple words of something, some things I've noticed. My name is Ed Madge, and I live at four-twenty-four Bonnie Lane. And some of you may recognize me. I do work for the district. I am a bus driver. And one of the things that, over the last several years, I've been very privileged to do is I take a great deal of trips with organizations, everything from the marching nights, sports teams, academic decathlon, you name it, I've probably driven them somewhere. And one of the things I always took notice, I always like to listen in and maybe try to talk a little bit to the people that are the coaches or group leader. And one thing I've noticed, the latter are getting up in the years, that they're getting advanced in age. And I've talked to a few of them, and I often wonder if our district has a policy or some kind of a commitment to try to cultivate new and young talent within our teachers. Because I notice when there's, most of these people look like they're about my age, which we're approaching retirement. And I think we need to look at that and develop young people to start taking into these positions. You have some of the outstanding organizations within this district. Most of you are familiar with them, marching nights, girls' water polo team, girls' basketball team, academic decathlon, just to mention a few. And I hope that we do start looking down the road. Just tonight, I was watching the news in Philadelphia, and here they're trying to recruit eight hundred and some odd teachers, or eight thousand teachers down there, is what they're hoping. It was somewhat ridiculous number to try to fill vacancies. I would hope that down the road in a few years, we're not looking at these outstanding people we have retire, and we have no one to back them up, or people that come in there and are not familiar with it. Even you as the school board, many of you have been here for a number of years, bringing a lot of experience and knowledge to the table when you come in here, that the people that are coming in behind you have some basis of knowledge of how, just the simple protocols of the school board itself. And I hope we're taking that consideration in our faculty of our students, and we can keep the tradition that we have in this district, which in my personal opinion, being a graduate here, is pretty good. I think we have a lot to be proud of, and I'd like to see it continued. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening?
For some reason, he was looking like me. But we had, we were talking about age in the executive session, so it's like, and everybody looked at me like I looked at old.
There you go. All right, let's move forward with our agenda. Recommend approval of the minutes of the February eighteenth, two thousand sixteen action meeting, as well as the minutes from the work session held on March eighth, two thousand sixteen, as circulated. Motion by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mrs. Bukowski. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Let's move forward with our committee reports, and I'll start with Safe Schools. Mrs. Charnock.
Thank you, Mr. Shapinski. The Safe Schools Committee met on March fourteenth and discussed the following. Mr. Wilson updated the Safe Schools Committee on recent Safe Schools activities that are ongoing and being planned for the spring. Mr. Wilson has been providing elementary schools with an internet safety program that is informative to students about internet and social media safety measures. This program is well-received and is ongoing. Spring activities include the planning of intruder drills and weather drills for the schools. The Safe Schools Committee was given an opportunity of secure, an update, rather, of security upgrades to the high school and ESC. This project will be going out to bid for a scheduled award in April. The work is scheduled to commence after the two thousand fifteen-sixteen school year and be completed prior to the start of the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year. Future surveillance camera upgrades were discussed, and the topic will be part of larger district initiatives and will be discussed at future meetings. The next meeting of the Safe Schools Committee is scheduled for Monday, May ninth, two thousand sixteen, at six PM at the ESC. End of report.
Thank you. Any questions of Safe Schools?
I just have a comment. We also discussed the possibility of hiring a part-time person to be at the high school from the time that high school ends at two-thirty-three o'clock to sometime in the evening, just as a body, to prevent fighting or anything else that might go on. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, that that was part of the discussion.
Yeah, we talked about that, and I was under the impression that Kurt, Tom, and the powers-to-be were going to talk about that, and they were going to move forward with that. That's what I'm hoping, because you have a good point.
I think they were also going to look at costs and get back to us with any costs involved, so.
I think this has been my thing for a long time. I was at the high school often this fall.
It's always open.
Would somebody, Mr. Snyder, would you be able to tell us what is our, the size of our security force at the high school?
The security force right now, we have twenty-two security officers district-wide, and...
And you can't have any of, how many are at the high school, though? That's what I want to know.
At the high school, we have twelve security officers during the day. We do have one in the evening at this point. That individual essentially travels the whole entire building constantly, so he's not in one place all the time. So we do have one individual that is working there. We do not have an individual that is sitting at the front desk in the concourse, you know, watching activities as they walk in and out of the building.
So this person would be in addition to the person that already is there? Okay.
Has there been any consideration just reassigning one of the twelve people?
That's a possibility. Maybe we could look at, you know, reassigning a part-time individual or something like that.
Or split schedule, so that some people come in later, that kind of thing? So they could stay in extent, keep their time, but still work on a different schedule? That's, I would assume, is probably a little bit more common.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for Safe Schools? Personnel, the vivacious Mr. Kerr.
The old Mr. Kerr. Oh, brother.
Young at heart. Personnel Committee met in executive session March first from five-thirty to six-thirty to discuss matters of personnel negotiations and potential litigation. End of report. Thank you. Great report. You're welcome. Support Services, the youthful Mr. Schilling.
Thank you. Well, that's wonderful, you know? Thank you, made my evening. Thank you, Mr. Shapinski. Support Service Committee met on Monday, February twenty-ninth, and discussed the following items. The Support Service Committee was provided a presentation from Upper Gwinnett Township to provide an update on the carrot status of the stormwater basin design. Township plans to commence construction this summer after all required approvals are received from all parties. Also, the second presentation was provided to North Penn baseball coach, Mr. Manaro, discussing requests to raise money to construct baseball dugouts and possibly grandstands. And of course, the committee was appreciative of the presentation, and Mr. Manaro did present the full board at a work session last week and got their input. Committee was presented a project change order for Inglewood Elementary renovations and addition project site, work contractor out of site Incorporated for replacement of unsuitable subsurface soil at both the east and west entrances. This change order is part of this evening's agenda for board consideration. The committee was presented a deduct change order for Hatfield Elementary renovations and addition project, electrical contractor, ETI Incorporated, for changes during construction and unused allowances. This deduct order also is a part of this evening's agenda. The committee was provided a bid schedule update for Montgomery Elementary renovation addition project. This project is scheduled to commence construction at the end of the school year and be completed by the fall of two thousand seventeen. Committee was provided a bid schedule update on the artificial turf replacement project. Bids are scheduled to be publicly open on April fifth at two PM at the SSC Sports Service Center. The project is scheduled to commence after the spring sports season is over and be completed by August two thousand sixteen. Also, a list of capital projects was discussed and are on this evening's board agenda for approval to advertise. The projects are planned to be completed this summer, and also, the next meeting of the committee will be Tuesday, March twenty-ninth, at six PM here at the ESC. Thank you, end of report.
Any questions for Support Services this evening? Thank you. Education, Community and Policy, the youthful Ms. Leonard.
I don't get an adjective.
I said youthful.
Okay.
I didn't get one.
Yeah, he heard.
The ECP Committee met on March fourteenth. There were several topics on the agenda that evening. Each year, the board must approve a list of act eighty days, which are teacher-in-service days that can be counted as student days in accordance with school code due to days lost as a result of weather or other emergencies. That list of days was presented and will be included on the April action agenda. Another item that was discussed concerned the changes affecting Keystone exams and graduation requirements as a result of Senate Bill eight-eighty that was signed into law in February two thousand sixteen. The impact of this change will delay the requirement that students be proficient on the Keystone exams until the class of two thousand nineteen. These changes will be reflected in the program of studies for both the middle school and the high school. At the meeting, there were further discussion regarding the proposed boundary realignments that would affect the attendance areas of Nash, Walton Farm, Inglewood, and Gwinnett Square. The proposal has been modified as a result of discussion between parents and administrators. Rather than redrawing the boundary lines in this area, a capping model has been proposed. This would result in incoming kindergarten and first-grade students being assigned to a designated school only after a target enrollment for the respective grade has been reached. The full plan will be presented at the next board work session meeting. Approximately thirty-five community members attended the meeting and offered comments and suggestions regarding the capping proposal. Chairperson Susan Leonard agreed with many in the audience who spoke that there is the need for longer-range planning and that these discussions should be taking place now. Information about a proposal that would gradually integrate more interactive technology and devices for all students to increase student engagement and learning was presented to the committee. Further details about this proposal will be presented at an upcoming community forum. The next ECP committee meeting will be on April eleventh. Thank you.
Any questions for ECP this evening? Finance, the charismatic Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Shapinski. Finance Committee report for Thursday, March seventeenth, two thousand sixteen. An update from the meeting of February twenty-ninth. Under new business, the monthly financial reports were reviewed with additional discussion on the following items. Tax collector, but that's for me.
Rusty.
So, I'll turn that off. Tax collector audit. I'm sorry, you're right, it's for the TV. I forgot. Thank you. Tax collector audits. The Upper Gwinnett and Toms and Township audits were reviewed. Two tax collectors are selected each year for audit. No issues were found, and all receipts were verified. North Monco Technical Career Center roofing project. Mr. Shrocki reviewed the history of the proposed project, as well as the North Penn's expected financial contribution. The apparent low bidder submitted a price of nine-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety dollars. A portion of the funding, five-hundred thousand, will come from the North Monco Capital Reserve Fund, and the remaining portion will be prorated based on each sending district market value. This item was moved to the March work session for further discussion regarding concerns about the authorization resolution. Digital technology initiative. Dr. Kristin Landis reviewed the proposed one-to-one initiative, as well as the required infrastructure and overall financial impact. Also discussed was the lease-to-own option and potential user fees. Development of a parent-focused group and community forum was discussed in order to solicit more information and feedback on the initiative from parents. The two thousand sixteen-seventeen preliminary budget and state budget update. Mr. Shrocki discussed the budget timeline and budget meetings with district administrators. He also discussed, he also reviewed the status of the two thousand fifteen-sixteen state budget and the proposed sixteen-seventeen state budget. Fiscal comparisons. Mr. Shrocki reviewed the district orders comparative financial reports for local school districts. Petty cash. Mr. Shrocki discussed the elimination of petty cash reimbursements at the end of the school year. Items recommended for work session, act meeting, the January two thousand sixteen budget transfers, they're on tonight's agenda. The tax collector audits appear on tonight's agenda, and the North Monco Roofing Project resolution is also on tonight's agenda. The next finance committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, March twenty-ninth, two thousand sixteen, at six-thirty PM, right here at the ESC. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Any questions of finance this evening? Here and now, we'll move on. North Penn Educational Foundation, the youthful Ms. Murphy.
The foundation met the first week in March, when several items of importance were discussed. Since February was foundation February, the efforts of this annual event were discussed. Twelve of our schools celebrated the foundation throughout the month, sharing information about our organization, raising money for our cause. Through the hard work of volunteer and staff members, close to five thousand dollars has been raised already this month. The foundation's annual online auction is up next. Its theme is "All the Places You May Go," and it will be held from April twenty-fifth to May first. If you remember, we had SOS last year. We are asking local businesses, restaurants, museums, spas, and more to donate their services and products for this popular event. In addition, we will once again have North Penn unique experiences, like a birthday party in the planetarium, limo ride and lunch ride with the principal, the best seats at graduation, and more. It was reported that the foundation's request to add course advancement to its educational improvement tax credit program projects was approved by the state. The foundation will now support NPSD low-income students to pursue course advancement studies. This week, the foundation also opened its grant request window and is accepting proposals for the two thousand sixteen-two thousand seventeen school year. We encourage all North Penn staff to consider what the foundation may be able to support for them. The next meeting will be held Wednesday, October, April sixth. One item up for discussion at this time will be hosting a concert and speaker series as a fundraising source. If you have any questions about the foundation, you can contact Christine Libarowski at the ESC. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the Educational Foundation this evening? North Monco Technical Career Center. Who's got the reports tonight?
We meet Monday, I believe, so I don't think we met, I mean, since last meeting.
Okay. No report?
No report. We'll share with you next time we meet.
Thank you. Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, again, the youthful Ms. Murphy.
And I must say that I do not have a report ready this evening, but I will have a report ready next time. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move forward with superintendent's reports. So, Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you, Mr. President. I recommend approval of a settlement agreement with student three-one-seven-one-six-one, whose name is on file in the office of the superintendent.
Motion by Mrs. Charnock, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved.
Recommend approval of change order SC one to Out-of-Site Infrastructure Incorporated for the Inglewood Elementary School Renovations and Additions Project at a change of contract amount of ten thousand five-hundred-five dollars fifty-one cents to remove and replace existing stone basin paving per item fifteen-sixteen A through B.
Motion by Mr. Diazio, seconded by Mrs. Bukowski. Comments or questions?
The only comment I would have, Tom, is in the past, we've always kept track of the change order and the percentage change, and I don't see that.
Okay.
Because I think that's important for the public, too.
Correct.
And that includes, you know, all of the works, you know, not just the site contractor or whatever, right?
Very well.
I think it's something that we should, we should be proud of, that we...
Absolutely.
Were able to get these renovation jobs done within a very, very reasonable change order amount, so.
Yeah.
So I'd like to see those continue. Just have to pull out your calculator, figure it out.
Sure, no problem. Any other comments? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved.
Recommend approval of deduct change order EC three to Electrotech Incorporated for the Hatfield Elementary School additions and renovations project at a change of contract amount and credit of twenty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-seventy-eight dollars ninety-five cents for changes during construction and unused allowances per item sixteen-dash-sixteen A through B.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions?
These are the kind I...
It's a good thing.
It's in our favor.
It is.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend rejection of the general construction bid and authorize advertising for rebid for the general construction work for the Montgomery Elementary additions and renovations project per item seventeen-sixteen.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments and questions? Mrs. Bukowski.
Steve, why, do you have any idea why we only got one bid in?
I'll actually defer that to Mr. Schneider to speculate on that.
Sorry. I thought you did the dollars. Okay.
From what we understand, from trying to get information from bidders that were interested but did not bid, there were many other projects that had to bid during the same period of time, and a number of those projects were new construction projects, where there were a complete new building, and a contractor would prefer to build a new building rather than look at a renovation project.
Right. Thank you.
It should be noted that that one bid that was received was two-point-six million dollars over the estimates.
Over, yes.
Over, correct.
Two-point-six...
Correct.
Million.
Correct. Hence, our recommendation to rebid.
Probably reject it anyways. Okay.
Obviously, it would impact our timeline.
At this point, we will be awarding in April, hopefully, with the rebid. It won't affect the start date, and it won't affect the end date. We're not changing those. The contractor will have to accelerate his contractual obligations before the first day of construction.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments for this? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved.
Recommend authorizing the two thousand sixteen capital projects to be advertised for bid per item eighteen-sixteen A through C.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of the resolution of the North Penn School District with respect to the two thousand sixteen re-roofing project at the North Monco Technical Career Center per item BA four, A through H.
Motion by Mrs. Leonard, seconded by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions?
I'm just going to note again my objection to this resolution as it's written. I've made my concerns known at previous meetings, but I'll just briefly reiterate here. I think that the resolution is drafted in a very sloppy manner, and by approving the resolution as it's written this evening, we're granting an incredible amount of authority to a board that's not our own, to the JOC at the North Monco Technical Career Center, to basically manage this project, to move forward with the project, to administer the project, to release all expenditures of funds related to the project, to award all bids, authorize all change orders, and be in charge of all other issues involved with the execution of the project. And I just think that that's an incredible delegation of responsibility to another board. We're paying a lot of money for this roof, it's several hundred thousand dollars, to our taxpayers, and my biggest objection to the resolution as it's written is it does not contain a cost in the resolution. So a yes vote on this resolution this evening means that we're voting yes to authorizing a capital project when there's no cost contained in the resolution. And to me, that's just not acceptable, so I'll be voting no this evening.
I would just like to know, if it exceeds the one-point-one million, that it would go back to the JOC, is that correct?
I don't, I don't see that anywhere written in the resolution.
Someone clarify that for me, because that's important to me.
All right, let me, let me try this again. Part of the package for the public in the agenda includes the bids that were received on the roofing project, as well as, I believe, an architect's report as to what...
What the bids were and the costs.
The bids were, yeah, the results bids.
Right.
Estimated cost of the project. Look, the way it works is, North Penn has three members that sit on the Joint Operating Committee. It's a board of eleven people. Eight of the other members are from four other sending districts, Methakin, Perkins Valley, Sauterton, and Wissahicken. Those folks are as frugal as we are and have the same issues with their home-school district that we do. It... that we do. To think that they will somehow go crazy, because I'm one of them. Susan Leonard is one of them, and Ed is one of those folks sitting on that committee. This is a delegation, that committee, to get the roof done. It's no different than what we did two or three years ago when we renovated the building to the tune of, what, eight, nine million dollars? Same thing, delegation of authority to the JOC. Now, you cannot look at this resolution in a vacuum. You know, this is not, you know, it's legislation or a contract case, and you can only look at the document that's written. We have numbers. We have a bid. It appears to be a responsible bidder. We have put money into it of 1.1 million. It's about 1 million, short of that. That leaves $100,000 left for change orders, to the extent there's a change order. And what we can do is, when we, the three of us, me, when we vote on accepting, presumably accepting, but it may not be accepted by the other board members, I have no problem with amending that motion to include the statement that if the project exceeds 1.1 million, they, the JOC, will have to go back to the sending districts for authority to recover that additional money. Okay? And also, keep in mind, this is taxpayer money, no doubt about it. But, the money that we're kicking back into this project, the 180,000 or whatever this North Penn share, came out of refinancing the bond. I mean, favorable interest rates allowed us to essentially take the money that we've already gave, we already gave away to invest into this building. Favorable interest rates allowed us to now take 180,000 back and fix the roof that should have been fixed, frankly, two or three years ago.
Right.
I, you know, I don't share, I understand Ed's concern. It is. It's a, the resolution is a blanket delegation of authority to the JOC. I sit on the JOC. I've been on the board 14 years. I trust how we run the operation over there. You know, it's different than this operation, no doubt. But nonetheless, I have no qualms about doing this. I'm happy to put a limit on it. I can assure you that, I can't imagine that that would not be accepted by fellow Joint Operating Committee members.
Right. Thank you.
So, I just think that information's important to consider as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr. I just was concerned that it wasn't done at the JOC. It was kind of like a last minute, and I respect Ed's, you know, concerns. I mean, he makes a good point. But, it should be dealt with over there. That's why we send you there. And it should be dealt with, that solicitor write that language, and then come back to us. But to bring us to a, you know, meeting last week and expect us to, you know, I'm not disagreeing with him, I think is kind of, you know, it's difficult to deal with. And I, you know, and I also understand if four of the five sending districts wouldn't agree to a change of that, it would go through automatically. But I think in the future, I would like to see that brought forth, you know, then, rather than, you know, wait till the last minute and then bring it to us. That's my concern.
John, I'll just note here, though, because I think that's actually a great point. We asked, after our Finance Committee met...
It wasn't brought to the, it was, my point is, you should have contacted, you have to understand, you guys, I was, I served eight years on the VOTEC board. I know how things are run over there. If you had a concern for it, you should have contacted every board member by email or called them up.
Well, what we tried to do, John...
To say that I didn't listen to a finance meeting is...
No, 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 not at all. What I'm saying is, after the Finance Committee meeting, we took questions back to North Monco. And we asked them if they would change the resolution.
Why didn't you do it when the first was, I'm confused.
Can I just, because I was there, too. We did, we passed the resolution as it was written unanimously. And then after the fact, there were questions about things that Mr. D'Azio thinks should have been delineated in there, in terms of a cap on change orders. And that really seems to be the only issue that you have with this resolution. But I have to say that we were all there. We were asked twice, do we all agree to send this resolution for approval? And we all approved it. And so, in hindsight, it's great to say, oh, we should have done this, and we should have done that. But we didn't do that. And so, this is what we passed now. If you don't want to approve it as our board, we have the right to do that. But I, as a member of the JOC, certainly signed the resolution that we passed on that day. And we can differ. And I know we will.
Well, just, Mrs. Leonard, I'll just note, I looked at the minutes from the JOC meeting. We did not pass the resolution as written. We passed an amended resolution. And I believe I circulated the minutes from that meeting, because there were specific concerns that were raised at that meeting, to Mr. Schilling's point.
The only, the only thing that was amended...
We did not pass that resolution as it was written.
That's not true.
It was passed as amended, because there were many concerns about the project.
No, it was amended to remove the name of the bidder and the amount of the bid. That was the only thing that was amended.
Correct. The amount of the bid was removed. And we passed a resolution as amended, which, those are the facts.
Right, which is this resolution?
Yeah, now, why'd you pass it?
We passed a, an amended resolution, Mr. Schilling.
Yeah, but why'd you pass it if you had a problem with it? I'm confused, I'm really confused with this.
The resolution that's before us this evening is not the identical resolution that was passed at the JOC level.
Oh.
Well, I don't know. Well, anyway, my point is, in the future, I think, I wish, I just wish, whether, no matter who it is, you know, try to deal with there, and then bring it to us. And if it's like, you know, that's all, man.
Candidly, I didn't see it as an issue to raise with any of you. It didn't bother me. The delegation of authority doesn't bother me. That's how we do work.
Well, it doesn't bother me really, but I see, I'm trying to respect his opinion.
You're going to have a roofing job that's supposed to be done in a very confined timeframe, and in the summertime, when we only meet, maybe we don't meet in July or whatever, we got five sending districts, and what, they're going to come back and, oh, we, a hundred-dollar change order. But you know what? We can't do anything until we fix that, because it impacts everything. Now, so, we're going to shut it down and come back, and because it's 100, I mean, listen, folks, I'm as frugal as anybody. I'm concerned about the taxpayers. We sit on that board. We make decisions over there. We can make a decision, as I said, that does put a cap on it. I mean, again, we're, this is more kind of, more form than substance. I mean, let's be practical. Again, if you all feel concerned about this enough to vote it down, so be it. I mean, there are four other districts. We're aware of at least one or two that have already passed. You know, they pass it, it really doesn't matter what we do. But I will assure you that I'll still go there Monday and say, let's just make sure everybody understands. And I think everybody understands.
Okay.
You know, the administration understands that they don't have a blank check.
Right.
And that we got to get this roof on for the money that's been put into that account. And hopefully, there's a little bit of money that is saved.
Well, and that's great if that comes to fruition, but we have no idea whether the JOC is going to be comfortable with those conditions.
I understand that. I do. I mean, I'm comfortable enough to tell this board that I've been there long enough, worked with these people long enough. I'm comfortable.
Well, you know, Tim, it's a gamble. It's a gamble I'm not willing to take. You know, we are paying just, I mean, I have the numbers in front of me here. We're paying 39% of this project. The next, the next school district, the next highest-paying school district, is paying 20%. So, we are paying double what any other person is paying. We clearly have the largest financial interest in this, in this issue.
Well, we have double the issue.
But what's the issue? I don't see, I'm, this issue, what's the issue?
The issue is the cost of the project, Tim. It's not in the resolution.
No, we know what the cost of the project is. You have the documents right behind the resolution. Why is it that you ignore the bid that came from the contractor? The information that the architect provided as to what this roof is going to cost? I mean, this is not in a vacuum. We've got facts, there are facts. You want to ignore those facts?
Those bid numbers are, those bid numbers are not part of the resolution. And they haven't been accepted, Tim. So, you know, we don't know that those are the numbers. In fact, when the initial study came out, the initial study said that the, you know, proposed, you know, recommended, the recommended 1.6 to over north of $2 million. So, you know, there's just too much uncertainty here with the dollars. We're in a tough position financially. We have a big budget ahead of us, and, you know, we shouldn't be making gambles with our, with our taxpayers' dollars right now.
I don't think it's a gamble. I disagree with you. I don't think it's a gamble. All right, let's wrap the conversation up. Well, we, and I want to make sure we got everybody's comments.
I think Mrs. Prokowski has a comment. And if I could, if I could recommend that we take a roll call vote potentially.
Absolutely.
Well, we're probably going to have to do that anyway. But Mrs. Prokowski, go ahead.
My problem with it, and when we were discussing it before, about this is a resolution that delegates the authority to the JOC. And that's good. But then, reading through this, the one that gets me most is, the last point, is that we are authorizing them to do any and all necessary actions to move forward.
Yeah, we always do that. We've always done that.
That means you've got to sign the document, you've got to do this.
We've always done that. I mean, I'm just saying, I'm not disagreeing with the issue here.
Understand, understand that, but there's still no...
We've always done that. So, why's it all of a sudden come up as an issue now?
Well, John, it's because we've never had a resolution where there's not been a base cost in it. That's the problem.
Sure there have.
Does this reference, does this resolution reference these bid amounts that are attached? Does it say there's an attachment?
Are you accepting the bid amounts on Monday?
Yes.
We don't know.
Are you guys planning on voting for a higher cost?
It's on the agenda, but we have no idea.
A higher cost than the lowest bidder?
Yeah, we're going to... That's what I'm saying, it makes no sense.
Are you planning on violating the law?
Right, exactly.
No, but Vince, there's been, there's been...
The law tells us we have to accept low bid unless there's, you know...
But there's nothing that tells us that we have to accept a bid. And I don't know whether we're going to...
What, with all those bids, all these bids, you're going to reject them?
Well, I think we, Mrs. Prokowski, please continue.
How many bids were, like, 25? 17?
Is that the only issue you wanted to raise? Gentlemen, please, come on. Mrs. Prokowski, was there any other issues you wanted to raise?
I'm sorry.
The youthful Ms....
Yeah, I'm sorry, the youthful Ms. Prokowski. Thank you. She reminded me to say youthful Mrs. Prokowski. I apologize. I didn't want to miss that point.
The item number seven does not limit, it, to me, it's a, it's a total blank check to go do whatever you want to do, authorizing to undertake any and all necessary actions in order to implement the intent of the resolution, authorizing moving forward the project and the project is to re-roof. To me, there's no cap. I agree with Ed totally. There should be something. On top of that, there's not even, you're saying that all these bids are here, but it doesn't reference them in the resolution.
It doesn't have to. That's my understanding.
But, Tim, that's what we're, that's what we're passing. We're passing the resolution. That's all we have.
Mr. Kerr.
No, but this is what they're going to do.
The solicitor did put this together, right? Your solicitor at the VOTEC did put this together, correct?
When you amend, when, hold on, please. When you amend, when the motion or resolution was originally amended, you mentioned that they took out the low bidder's name and the bid itself.
It was not accepted.
Why, was there an issue over still checking references and responses?
Yes.
Is that what it was?
Yes.
That's happened before. That's not something...
Yeah, that's, I've noticed that before.
In the interim, in the interim, the architect did its normal kind of...
And Mr., and again, the solicitor put this resolution together. You're a solicitor, correct?
Yes. Is it the best thing ever written? No.
I agree, I agree with that.
Yeah, let's be, I'm going to be practical. That's all. I mean, let's vote. If anybody else wants to say what the rule of night law is.
Any further comments?
Can I just, you brought this up a couple times. If it doesn't matter what our vote is, why are we voting?
Because they want to, because I want to vote.
Yeah.
Well, it's a responsible, it's a responsible board member.
Oh, I will.
Mr. President?
Okay. But even if, even if...
Let's come on to a roll call.
Even if we vote this down, it doesn't matter.
Vince, can we do a roll call?
Well, that's not necessarily...
This district's made.
It does matter, Terry. It does matter to me.
It matters to me.
And that's fine. Everybody has an opinion, and you get to vote that opinion in a minute.
Yeah, you get to respect your opinion. I'm not, I'm not going to...
We've had a lot of conversation. I'd like to call, roll call, please.
All right.
For this vote. There you go. Thank you. Okay, roll call vote on the North Monco Roofing Resolution. Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. D'Azio?
No.
Mr. Kerr?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
No.
Mrs. Prokowski?
No.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mrs. Charnock?
Yes.
Mr. Shapinski?
Yes.
Motion carries, 6-3. All right, motion passes. Let's move on.
Thank you, Mr. President. Recommend acceptance of the gifts to the district as listed.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mrs. Prokowski. Comments or questions?
I just want to say thank you to all these people who gave. I really mean that. I really, I never want to take it for granted. I really appreciate the gifts that people give to our district, and I want to say thank you to everybody.
So, noted.
So, I have to ask about the chuhuli. Isn't this neat? Chuhuli.
Oh, yeah.
I can't believe it.
Yeah.
The chuhuli makes glass, right?
Yes, glass, on scale.
Oh, that, yeah, that's like the glass, yeah, that's high-end stuff.
Very, very.
Yeah, it was just, we were just talking to my wife.
It's exciting.
Cool.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the personnel items as listed A through C.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Diazio, seconded by Mrs. Prokowski. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
I recommend approval of student travel per item BA7.
Motion by Mrs. Murphy, seconded by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved.
Recommend approval of contracts per item BA8, A through C, copies of which are on file in the Office of Business Administration.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowski, seconded by Mr. Kerr.